Everyone, welcome to the first board meeting of the year.
Good morning, Alyssa.
Morning, Alyssa.
This conference will now be recorded.
Well, that sounds pretty official, so it's nine o'clock and unless there's a reason to hold off starting the meeting, I will get things going. All right, well, like Alyssa said, welcome to the first Board of Commissioners' meeting for 2021. We'll start with introduction. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
San Ogero Commissioner.
Nancy Wyss, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Lance Cronin, County Council.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioners' staff.
Lori Starha, Director of Natural areas and Parks.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Lynn McKeed, Benton County Fairgrounds Manager.
Kate Porcha, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Kelly Losi, Health Department.
Lillian Neville, Board of Commissioners' staff.
Mary Otten, CFO.
I don't think we heard from Gary Stockoff, but I see he is, there he is. Wake up, Gary.
Oh, wake up what? Gary Stockoff, Public Works?
No. All right. And I see Sarah Hartstein is with us. Morning, Sarah. And go. Did we miss anybody? If not, the introductions are complete and now it's, are there any announcements? Here, here you go, and we'll move on to item two, election of the Board Chair and Vice Chair.
Can I make a motion, Chair?
Absolutely.
I move to nominate Van Ogero as Chair.
Yeah, I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, I will move to nominate Nancy Wyss as Vice Chair.
All right, and I will second that. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Well, I will now turn the page over to our new Chair, Commissioner Ogero.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone, and good morning, all. The next item on our agenda is to hear any comments from the public, and I do see that we have a couple of people with us this morning. Is there anyone that would like to say a few words to the, before the Board this morning? I, I know that I'm giving a little bit of extra time, but finding that unmute button can be a little daunting, so I figure it's always worth the extra seconds of dead air. Hearing no voices, I will move on and we will review and approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda is approved and we'll move forward with our work session. The first item is to hear from our Department Operations Center, and that will be led off by Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair Ogero. Update for the Department Operations Center, also known as the DOC. Not surprisingly, our major focus right now is vaccine planning and administration. I have some numbers to share with you today. Keep in mind that these are approximate numbers and not exact, and that is because they're good pretty much as of December 31st, and they come from Oregon Health Authority's records, which every vaccinating provider must report into, and providers have up to 72 hours to report following vaccination. So these numbers are constantly changing and are likely higher than what you see on the report on any given day because of that lag time. But approximately 200,000 doses were allocated to Oregon initially. More is coming, and I think more has already arrived, so that was our initial allocation. And only 25% of the doses that arrived have been administered so far, so in the approximate 50,000 dose range. And in Benton County, the approximately 1,000. And again, even as of today, those numbers are edging up a little bit higher. Initial allocations, as you, I think, already know, went to Sumeritan Health Systems as part of that very top tier Phase 1 Group 1A priority group. Also in that group are urgent care and some initial doses of vaccine have come to the Public Health Division, and those have been, or are in the process of being nearly completely allocated last week and this week. And more is on the way, although not at the rate that I think everyone was hoping for initially. So at least at this point in time, projections are that it could take till as long as the end of February. Again, this is potential information that will change, but the most recent is possibly end of February before we get through Group 1A. And there are four different categories within that Phase 1A to get through, but it may be the end of February before we're there and ready to move on to Groups 1B and 1C. Right now, as challenging as the logistics can be, this is probably the easy part because the prioritized groups that are in Phase 1A are really easy to identify for most areas. It's those hospitals, urgent care, skilled nursing facilities, EMS providers and first responders, and we do know that our EMS providers and first responders here have already received doses and have begun to vaccinate and are actually doing that collaboratively across county lines between Benton and Lynn County. Group 2 in that Phase 1A moves out farther in the long-term care facility and congregate care sites, and that also includes hospice programs, mobile crisis care, those kinds of services, secure transport, and individuals working in a correctional setting. And again, still within Phase 1A, there's Group 3 that moves down to outpatient settings that serve specific high-risk groups, people providing in-home care, date treatment services, non-emergency medical transport, those are all groups in Group 3 of Phase 1A. And then finally, Group 4 in that first phase are other healthcare providers and outpatient, public health, early learning settings, and death care workers. So that, those are all of the groups that ideally would receive vaccinations before we would even get to Group 1B, which starts to work its way down to everyone else and eventually to everyone in the general population who's eligible to receive vaccine. The state's Oregon Health Authority and the Governor's Office will be giving everyone guidance once you get past that Phase 1A. They continue to guide around Phase 1A now, answering questions and providing assistance. There are more meetings than we can count in terms of the, trying to keep the communication clear and consistent across the state, and of course, our folks are involved in all of those all week long, as well as the regional group meetings for Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln. All the health officers, medical officers, and so forth are meeting to coordinate, and of course, our DSC has a series of meetings here in Benton County that we continue to add other partners to, including city emergency management representatives and others as needed to make sure that we have everyone at the table as we work through these issues, communicate and make decisions. The regional group meetings meeting is led by our health officer, Dr. Bruce Thompson, has really set guiding principles as being equitable, equitability and vulnerability in terms of making decisions about where extra doses would go, and other doses that came to the Health Department. Five different urgent care settings were selected to receive those first doses, and they have been distributed, and some of those include Benton County employees at the Community Health Center who fall into that sort of urgent care kind of category, meaning that they treat people who are suffering from respiratory distress and so are at greater risk. Right now, there's still a lot yet to know about how this is going to work, including the details of both the state plan and our county plan, but we're working hard to put those things in place later this week, and each week after that, we'll have more to share with you as that plan firms up. I think that the most difficult part will probably be when we get to the general population, and every county will handle that a bit differently, I imagine, depending upon the resources they have. For example, Lynn County has a robust medical reserve corps, and at least at this point, some of their discussions include a drive-through clinic, perhaps using their fairgrounds as an option for that, and utilizing the medical reserve corps that they have. For Benton County, we're in conversations with our partners at American Health Systems to see how we can, you know, combine resources, play to our strengths, and all work together once it gets to that larger general population that would be vaccinated. And then, of course, there are lots of providers across the county and across the state who have registered to be able to receive and administer vaccines. Some of those are commercial pharmacies, and so one of the pieces of information we're lacking, but the state is hoping to pull together for all of us in local health departments, is a list of all of the different entities that have registered and that will be receiving vaccine, and hopefully some method of us determining how much they're all receiving, because one of the roles of the Health Department would be to ensure that that distribution happens as fairly and equitably and efficiently as possible. One of the things that makes this a little more challenging than with the flu vaccine is just that once you have a certain vial that is open, you must use the doses in that vial within a certain amount of time, and so there's just more sensitivity around being sure that we don't waste any of this and that we get it administered as timely and thoughtfully as possible. So again, a lot more to come on that, but I wanted to at least say that that's a lot of what the DOC and a lot of our public health staff are focused on right now. In addition to that, as you know, the Governor issued new guidance for schools, which allows districts and schools to make their own decisions about whether or not they maintain or expand in-person learning. And so our, our team that's focused on assisting the schools continues in their work of reviewing the plans, making recommendations, giving guidance on those plans, and so that work continues as it did before, just the decision-making authority has moved from the state level to the district schools. We're also focused on outbreak response. Outbreaks are normally reported on a weekly basis by the Oregon Health Authority and particular workplace outbreak. There are almost always small outbreaks going on at any given time. Right now in Benton County, there is a more significant outbreak, as you may know, and that is at a long-term care facility. Our team, the Oregon Health Authority, are surrounding that facility with support and assistance in managing that outbreak, and will continue to do so as long as it's necessary. And then finally, I would say the other primary thing the DOC is focused on, turning our attention more robustly to identifying inclement weather shelters for our individuals experiencing homelessness. As you know, we've had some, a lot of rains lately and a lot of flood risk, and that's just added to clear relief in the reality that we have, which is a need for more inclement weather shelter, which is COVID-related, in addition to being weather-related, because as you know, the capacity of our existing options is much less based on the social distancing that are present in those shelters now. So those are the highlights, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Commissioner Malone?
Suzanne, you mentioned Lynn County potentially doing something kind of outside normal distribution panels. If the pace of vaccination keeps being slow, does Benton County have any contingency plans to kind of develop something outside of normal distribution channels?
I don't know that there are options for us to have different distribution panels. The distribution runs through the state of Oregon, and it is based on the population of each area, and it's distributed in that manner. So if it is not coming as quickly as we would like, that's not just the case for Benton County, that is the case for everyone, including Lynn County. When we refer to Lynn County doing something a little different in terms, just in the method by which they may distribute what they have. So for example, when they may come to the general population part of vaccination, that is when they may choose, with whatever amount of vaccine they have, which presumably would be a larger volume by the time they get there, they may choose to have something like a drive-through vaccination clinic utilizing the medical reserve corps. Whereas in Benton County, for example, they prefer to have a site clinic somewhere and draw people into it, and they have two offices around the county, and we may actually, you know, go out to places where people can't necessarily get to us. So depending upon each county's needs and available resources, they may choose different methods of actually administering the vaccine when we get to that point, but the amount, the volume of vaccine that comes is not something that we'll have great deal of control over other than just continuing to state our need and filling in the gaps as we identify them, but the decisions about the amount we get are based on our population.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wyss, any questions?
Thank you, no, not this time.
Suzanne, you mentioned that there is a close collaboration with Lynn County right now, and can you tell me a little bit more about what that looks like?
Currently, Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln are on regular calls, making sure that we all have the same understanding, and where we don't, bring clarity to the situation or decide what to escalate up to the Oregon Health Authority to get responses for all of us. But a little more that we're having discussions around what might work best at the local level in terms of how Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln are going to manage distribution and administration of the vaccine, where we have similarities and where we might differ depending upon our different county needs, and trying to identify ways in which we could potentially share resources. So I don't know that those have been specified yet, but if Lynn County has a particular strength and they have the ability to share that with us, and we have something we can share with them in return, whether it's, you know, tapping into their medical reserve corps, or sharing supplies, or things of that nature.
Yeah, I know that in the contact tracing phase of things, we, our teams went out into the agricultural areas and provided more services that were culturally specific in people's native languages, and if we could provide that and they could help support us with their medical reserve corps, that seems like it would be a lovely way to collaborate. Commissioner Malone, I saw you had your hand up.
Suzanne, do you have a sense of, you mentioned the original 200,000 doses of, coming into Oregon. Do you have a sense of what kind of resupply is like? Is this getting anywhere close to routine shipments that we can plan on receiving?
Yeah, that's, one of the challenges right now is we don't know, and we get very little notice, and we're hearing that from our healthcare partners as well. It seems to be coming on a weekly or nearly weekly basis, but the amount we're going to receive and exactly what day, we usually find out about 24 hours in advance.
Well, hopefully.
I should mention also, in response to the partnership question, that as you know, we have clinic, community health center clinics in Lynn County, and so that is obviously part of our partnership as well, in the sense we administer any vaccinations that would cover those two clinics as well.
Good, thank you.
One other question, Suzanne, with respect to the pharmacy role and private clinics, do those doses also come through OHA, and is it the Oregon Health Authority that's allocating them across the state, or is there a parallel commercial channel that exists or will evolve? Or do we even know?
Yeah, all of the above, but we're not on that either. That is also a significant set of questions that have been put forth to the Oregon Health Authority, and they are doing their best to get answers for all of us. There are federal partnerships with these commercial pharmacies. One, we understand, is specifically related to working with long-term care facilities. There is another one apparently that is more about administering to other groups beyond those highest priority groups, and that's also a partnership with the federal government. So the states are not necessarily in, the little men in that arrangement, nor do they have answers about exactly how it's working and the timing of all of that. They're working to help pull that together for us, and of course, we're reaching out in our local areas to various pharmacies to talk with them and see if we can determine at our end what's happening as well, because it's challenging for a local health department to play its role in ensuring timely and accurate distribution if we don't know who's getting it and when. Some health departments around the state have already been contacted by various commercial pharmacies to say, we are in and we want to work together and we want to collaborate with you and we want to be helpful, so that's a good sign, but there's still a lot of outstanding questions about that.
Thank you. That certainly complicates things a lot when there's communication going on at every single geographic level between all of those multiple parties and no parameters laid out. Thank you. Any other questions for Suzanne? Joe?
Suzanne, good morning. Thanks for joining us this morning. The question I have relates to the chain of custody regarding vaccines, and can you describe the security of the supply chain and what is being done to prevent, for example, an underground market being established? I don't know if that's possible, but my experiences have taught us that when you have such a large rollout of something like this, that there are opportunities at certain points in the supply chain for vaccines to not make it to where they were intended. So can you speak to that at all in a security issue in your mind?
Yeah, I think only at a high level, but I'd be happy to gather more information about that and bring it back. I think the Oregon Health Authority, the state of Oregon, distributes the vaccine only to registered providers that they have approved in their system, and we have posed questions about how we can appropriately share that. So if someone has excess vaccine and they've already vaccinated their top priority group, but they know there are other priority groups in their community who have not yet fully been vaccinated, those are the questions we've been posing around, can we share? How, how do we do that? I know there is a great deal of administration involved in capturing all that data and tracking where everything is. For example, something comes to our Health Department and we begin to determine how. For example, if something comes to our health department and we begin to determine how we can share that with various urgent care centers that haven't yet received vaccine and need our assistance. Our key person involved in that is going to be receiving the vaccine, she's going to be cataloging that, she's going to be entering it into a data system and if she delivers it anywhere, she will deliver it personally. There is a fair amount of advocacy for ensuring that if we already know where this vaccine should go, we can tell the state and they will send it there directly in order to minimize the number of times that we are transporting vaccine to different locations, partly because it has time consuming and we have limited resources. So driving all over the county to deliver it is probably not the best use of our time. But secondly, for the reason that you're describing, it's just going to be more timely and secure if it goes directly from the state to the entity that needs it. But undoubtedly, in local areas, partners will be sharing vaccine and sharing doses and tracking to see that it's managed efficiently and securely. Right now, there are a pretty finite number of, you know, individuals or entities that have the capacity to receive the current vaccine. As this bigger goes out to the general population, I think those logistics will get more challenging. I'll be happy to bring back more information about what the current assurances are and checks and balances and what they may be talking about for the future. I do believe that logistically it's very challenging, but some standards, I also believe that some standards rule of vaccination tracking are important.
Thank you Suzanne. Any further questions? We all look forward to hearing the next report when we hear in the media about what's going on nationally. Of course, prompts a lot of questions about what's happening locally. So it's very helpful to have a better understanding of the local picture and very much appreciate the efforts of you and your team to do everything you do to help get the vaccine out as quickly as we can and effectively and equitably.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that next up is Kate Portia.
Good morning Commissioners. So nice to see you Commissioner Weiss, welcome. So happy to have you here. A quick update from the Economic Development Office for you all. We had an extremely busy December, as did everybody. For us though, it was sort of happy news in terms of getting PPE and getting funds out the door to our businesses who so desperately needed it. So I wanted to update you real briefly on the three different pots of funding that we were able to get out the door. The biggest one was the governor's funding. We had about 1.25 million to get out the door to businesses in Benton County. And as you may recall, we did this as a two-tiered lottery. The notion from the governor's office and the feedback we heard from you all was to prioritize businesses that were in four different categories, including those that had to shut down because of closures, those that were in tourism or hospitality or events, minority women or disabled veteran owned businesses, and those businesses that were in the rural parts of Benton County. So we structured it where we did 75% of the funds as a lottery that if you were in one of those four groups, you basically got a ticket into that lottery. And then we did a second round, a second lottery for the remaining 25%, where if you were a business that was negatively impacted, but either were in those categories that rolled forward if you weren't selected, or were just, you know, a white male business owner in Corvallis, then you'd be entered into that other lottery. Ultimately, we were able to fund 81 businesses with the funds that we received. But I do want to let you know that we received 296 applications. Again, we had about 1.25 million to get out. The total demand though was 4.6 million. So in both of those cases, numbers and dollars, we were about four times oversubscribed, which I think just illustrates for you all the significant need that exists with our businesses at this point in time, right? So that was the governor's fund. We also completed our local round of funding. This was in partnership with the city and the county using CARE-ACT dollars. We had 275,000 to get out the door. We were able to fund 48 businesses with that program. And the other CARE-ACT program that we got out the door was, as you all recall, the funding that you did for our new businesses. So these were businesses that were started in 2020. Our office has been trying to pay close attention to recipients and understanding who we're missing, right? And making sure that we're casting a net to capture those folks and give them an equitable shot. And we realized that these new businesses started in 2020 were not eligible for really any of the programs that the state or our local county had set up because in all of those cases, we were asking folks to present their 2019 data to compare it to 2020, right? To see, to basically show that they had been negatively impacted. And we realized that we needed a way, we had a handful of businesses in Benton County who had started early in the year and had been negatively impacted, but they weren't being helped. And so we were able to stand up this program very quickly with the help of Mary Ottley and her fine team. And so we ended up funding 11 businesses, 11 of these new businesses. Originally it was going to be 10. We had 11 qualified applications and so we just decided it would be better to fund all of those. So our 2020 businesses were able to receive some much-needed help as well and we've received some nice feedback on that. Our other CARE-ACT programs are getting out the door as well. In fact, our out-the-door, as you may recall, this was legal services for our low-income businesses. We've had a handful of takers on that. We rolled out the tent program for businesses. Jerry Sorty led that program to assist financially with those businesses needing some help with tents and some handful of other programs helping with tourism and our partners at DCA and Visit Corvallis. So really, I think just a strong effort, a strong showing and I'd be remiss if we didn't, as always, express our gratitude to our partners, Community Lending Works. They're never here to hear it. We tell them on the side though, they did amazing work, not just for Benton County, for Lane County, for Grant County. They pushed out an amazing amount of work and funds to our communities in such a short amount of time and we owe them a debt of gratitude. And also our other partners, our Chambers of Commerce in Philomena, Pat Herr up in a Dare Village, all these different business organizations, they've been helping us to spread the word about these programs and then also more recently with this large amount of PPE that we have for businesses, getting that out the door to the folks that need it. So yeah, just want to say thanks. On the PPE, we still do have quite a bit of PPE for businesses. I shared this with Suzanne and her team. This PPE that we have is available for both businesses and nonprofits. So if folks are listening or if you have a connection to a nonprofit entity or a business that could use some personal protective equipment, we have an extensive amount of not just masks, but hand sanitizing wipes. We have cases and cases and cases. In fact, it's sort of taken over a conference room at the city. And so we're looking to get those out the door. We held two weekend and day, we did Friday, Saturday on different occasions to get those out, but we've still got plenty left. So let us know if anyone can use those. And that's the end of my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Ben.
Kate, James Day from the GT called me, called me sometime, I think just before Christmas about how this program was going. And I assume you, and I referred him to you, did, was the article that came out pretty accurate as far as describing what you've just gone over here?
Yeah, yeah, it did. I was really pleased with that coverage. And then for those of you that read the Daily Barometer, the Barometer just did a really nice story as well and had interviewed us, Christina Reclo, Visit Corvallis, and a couple of businesses. And so that was nice as well.
Well, and sure appreciate your efforts on a short timeline to get the money out the door to businesses, obviously, obviously need it. And it sounds like there's more money coming our way sometime fairly soon. So it's good that we've had the practice, getting procedures in place and I guess you can look forward to the next round.
Indeed, no, we are anticipating that and working, we're actually considering, our team was talking in our team meeting yesterday, potentially about a survey. It's been about a year, well, not quite, I guess it was March, we're coming up on a year. But we did a survey very early on in the crisis and we think it may be a good time to re-survey our businesses, really understand where they're suffering, what their needs are, what type of help could be most influential. So we're talking about that right now, perhaps in advance of a next federal package coming down the pipe so that we could really be prepared and have some good data to share with you all as policymakers as you consider how you might want to roll those funds out. So thinking about that.
Any other questions? Well, again, thank you Kate, to your team and to all of the partners that have made this effort possible. It takes a lot of coordination and preparation to get money out the door, especially on such a rapid basis. I'm hoping that it will indeed be of assistance to those folks around Benton County that need it so badly and will look forward to being able to provide more assistance in future. I think one of the most frustrating things is that with such a short supply of funds, it's very hard to be as strategic and targeted as it might be nice to do. But to try and distribute funds in an equitable way that gives everyone an opportunity for assistance in these times is a really tall order. So thank you and share your gratitude to Community Lending Works as well.
You bet.
Okay, I don't believe we have any other updates from the departmental operations team, but if we do, this is your time to pipe up. Okay, then we will move on to item 5.2, which will be an update on our Forest Resources Stewardship Plan and Adam Stebbins and Lori Starhout will be presenting. Good morning Commissioners. I believe Adam is calling in this morning. Adam, are you caller three?
Well, if you could, if I could step back for a minute, I know he's in the conference room and trying to link in. If I would ask that the board either grant me a couple minutes or if you want.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
I can hear you now, Adam.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Adam.
Okay, I was thinking Lori would tee this up nicely for me, but I guess I can go. So excited to share with you where we're at with the senior plan update for the Forest Resources Stewardship Plan. Recall, we started this a year ago and we have a draft report now. All of the Commissioners hopefully have the full packet that I provided, has the executive summary of the plan, the review committee and the RFP process details. So gives you a pretty good idea of the journey we've taken over the last year. And it's been, it's been excellent, especially given some of the adversity with the shutdowns and forest fire situation that made some of the fieldwork more interesting for our consultant. But only, only small delays, given all the adversity. So happy to report we're pretty well on track to have a final draft plan by next week. And that'll be a public, you know, ready draft plan. That'll be widely circulated through the social sites we have, the website. We're going to have some virtual public meetings. Can't have our old school public meetings right now, which we love in natural areas and parks, but just logistically it's not something we're going to take on. The, Chomp Mountain Forest will be participating with us in the two public meetings that'll be virtual. So we'll have presentations and wide information sharing and Q and A and then that'll all be recorded so that people can check it out, you know, anytime as we move into implementation, starting this, basically this next biennium really, when it really starts getting going. But, you know, looking for adoption from the Board of Commissioners and the Natural Areas and Parks Board of the final, you know, public reviewed plan sometime likely in February, just given those slowdowns. We, you know, may have to push it out a little bit further depending on what kind of public comments we get, but we have plenty of time before we will be moving into any implementation activities. So the big change this year, which we're really happy about, is we moved away from the timber management unit geospatial design using our GIS system and our consultant's GIS system, along with the very cool, very detailed three-inch, nine-inch aerial imagery that we collected fortuitously this past July. We were able to redelineate these timber management areas into resource management units, redefine those boundaries as changes have occurred over the last ten years, reprioritize how those different forest compositions are managed to achieve our sustainable forestry and our natural resources and habitat conservation and restoration goals. So that is a great guiding force going forward and, you know, the consultant, Chomp Mountains' subcontractor did the forestry plots, you know, had hundreds of sample plots to give us a very robust database within those management units to project what that sustainable forest harvest would look like going forward using, you know, thinning techniques, fire prevention, thinning, habitat enhancement support for our habitat conservation plan that we implement also, I oversee for the department for the prairie management areas. So, you know, we, we've done a lot in this plan and I'm looking forward to sharing the public drafts, you know, ready, full report next week. We had our internal review and Chomp Mountains incorporating those edits and looking forward to getting those out. And that's really the highlights and I think it'd be helpful to just go back and forth with some Q and A and if I don't have the answers, I can hopefully find them for you.
Thank you, Adam. I have a couple of quick questions. One is when you, after you hold the public meetings, will there be a comment period so that people who can then take a look at the recording and provide comments online? And what, how long might that comment period be and how will you publicize the opportunity to provide input?
Yeah, like, like I was saying, we're going to go with the virtual tools we have. So we'll, we'll take it any way possible. So when we have the, the virtual public meetings, you know, people can provide questions real time through the WebEx conference system. They can provide it through our Facebook, they can send emails to the department. um, they can provide it through our Facebook, they can send emails to the Department, uh, the, the public comment period, uh, will, will go until we've addressed all the comments that are received, I mean, the, that's how we did it during the RFP, and that's how I propose doing it now, so, um, whatever time period that is, and, you know, the Boards have said these are, you know, fully addressed, just as during the RFP process, um, you know, we have, we have a goal of the end of January, but with some of the delays I mentioned, you know, we'll be likely into February at some point, uh, but no big deal, there's no rush.
Well, it seems to me that it'd be better off setting a, a comment period, and, and so that you can then integrate it all into the document, um, and then perhaps provide another iteration, um, to us for informational purposes and to the, uh, Parks and Natural Areas Board, um, prior to us seeing it, um, so, that might be helpful, the other question I had was, um, you say there's no time sensitivity, and that this new plan would inter- into effect essentially with the new biennium, however, part of this process separated out the contract for, uh, point resource planning from the contracts for implementation, so I'm assuming that there will also need to be some, uh, time in order to put out requests or proposals for, um, contractors to implement any of the work that's envisioned under this plan?
Yeah, so, a big shift to recap from the last couple, um, updates, but it is a big shift worth, worth talking about, is in the past, we've combined the planning and the implementation, and now, with the staff resources that we've developed over the latter half of, you know, twenty fifteen, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one now, uh, we're able to, uh, efficiently coordinate and to, you know, drive that project implementation, so we get the best fit from the, uh, private and public partners that we have to do the work, so, we definitely have to, as you said, Commissioner, go through a RFP process for select projects, um, how that, how those projects will be bundled, or, you know, parsed out, if you will, going forward, we're not, we're not finaling that because we don't have a final, you know, proposed plan schedule, but, uh, we will get there, and then internally, and with the new directors coming on board, finalize what that looks like.
Okay, so there's some, some uncertainty there, just in terms of the, um, both schedule and it, just, uh, management approach, um, and I have one last question.
Yeah, we need to, we need to make sure we bring new folks up to speed, and, uh, have everyone understand how we're doing project implementation and the RFPs associated with that.
Okay, the, um, on the page, on page one of the executive summary for the Forest Resource Stewardship Plan update draft, um, which is page eight twenty-one in the packet, um, there are nine overarching ownership objectives listed, um, and I, I was wondering whether there's any sense of priority among those objectives, because, um, clearly, there are going to be times when there are significant trade-offs between those objectives.
Yeah, it's really driven by the resource management units, so these new, uh, management areas that we have, there's certain priorities associated with each, each of them, and there's certain, uh, sensitivity classifications associated with each, each of them, so that's really gonna drive, uh, the priorities, so if you have an area that includes, you know, a historic, uh, plantation stand that, you know, Fred Bezzel planted thousands of trees in back in the seventies, that's gonna have a higher priority on sustainable forestry, thinning, variable retention type activities versus a mixed hardwood forest within a streamside, you know, riparian area that's gonna have, uh, a no-touch conservation focus.
Uh, yeah, I, I think, I, I think that the resource management, um, units will help, but I can still envision a situation where you have a resource management unit where you could either choose, uh, to, uh, manage for kind of a sustainable production model, or, uh, choose to emphasize carbon storage, so, I think that there, there are going to be choices embedded in this moving forward, despite the fact that resource management units allow you to do some of that unit by unit across the landscape, so, I, I, I guess I was just wondering whether that question had been tackled, or whether it's just going to be left for, um, whoever is actually implementing the plan to wrestle with moving forward.
No, it'll all be, uh, clear from the, uh, resource management attributes, so, those, those type of, uh, calls that you were talking about are already designated through the sensitivity, sensitivity classification, now, I will say, you know, we're gonna get this plan as realistic and, you know, doable as possible, but if we have another, you know, type ice storm like in twenty fourteen that came and ripped out, you know, massive acreage, um, tree tops, and we had to go in and do salvage harvesting for all sorts of reasons, including concerns around, um, you know, beetle infestation, uh, you know, health of the adjacent stands, so on and so forth, that's when those adaptive management type calls, uh, come up, and that's also covered in the plan on how, how we are going to tackle those.
Okay, I'm, I look forward to seeing the whole plan, um, beyond the executive summary, um, I won't take any more time, and I know that Commissioner Malone has questions.
All righty.
Um, thanks, uh, I'll start off with the easy one, Adam, uh, right at the third line, uh, thousand thirty-four, and I assume that's acres?
Yeah, so, Fort Hoskins, Benton Green, and Bezzel, those three properties, the total acreage that's included in the plan for forest stewardship is that number.
Uh, there's no unit, uh, designated, so, um...
It's on the next line, um, it just specifies that it's GIS system acres, rather than, um, other measurement, acres, because sometimes those numbers come up different.
All right, um, and, you know, since you started this, uh, project, there's been a name change for the, uh, Department, and I, I assume, uh, that will get updated as, as you get to the, uh, final pro- um, product.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
And, uh, I saw Mark Miller's name on the document, is, is he still actively, uh, involved?
Um, Mark is in a ex officio type review role, Shane Hensler's the lead forest aid consultant.
Okay, uh, I'd heard something about the R word in, uh, retiring, and, um, so was it, I was curious on his, uh, um...
Yeah, yeah, he's stepping back, uh, from, you know, on the ground, you know, lead project roles, and I think at some point, here, Sam is gonna be retired, but I don't know that he goes.
Okay, and, um, similar comment to the objectives, I, uh, assume those weren't in any particular order, and would depend on, uh, particular, um, project, which ones, you know, rise towards the top, but I'm, uh, looking forward to more, uh, discussion of that, and, uh, it, um, looks like a good, uh, a good list of objectives, so, um, I guess, uh, last comment is congratulations on, you know, getting the project this far, uh, under, uh, very trying circumstances, uh, and, I, I realize it's not, not finished, but, uh, you, you've done, um, done well to get it, uh, to this point, uh, with, with the situation that we've been dealing with over the last ten months.
Yeah, I appreciate that, uh, we really didn't slow down when it comes to the Natural Resources Program, we actually got done the most work we have since I took over, and, uh, it was good.
Well, I'm looking forward to the, uh, uh, final product, Adam.
Excellent.
Any questions, Commissioner Weiss?
Uh, no questions, I appreciated, uh, the detailed thorough information in the packet, and I appreciate my fellow Commissioners' question, um, I am prepared to make a motion.
Questions from anyone else? Go ahead.
I move to direct staff to work with Chomp Mountain Forestry to finalize the draft Benton County Natural Areas and Parks Forest Resource Stewardship Plan update and complete associated public outreach for finalizing plan updates.
I will gladly second that.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Adam, thank you, Lori, uh, we look forward to hearing more, um, and, uh, we will have another discussion about it as soon as, uh, we've had the public, uh, uh, opportunity for involvement and engagement about this draft plan.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, moving forward, uh, we are now ready for our fleet systems update, and we actually gained a couple of minutes, so, uh, we're right on schedule, um, presenting will be Gary Stockhoff and Keith Nicholson from Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Joe Kirby, Benton County Administrator, I just wanted to kick this off, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, Gary Stockhoff here in just a moment, uh, the purpose of this, uh, presentation is to give you an update regarding our fleet services operation, uh, as you know, we've had some challenges over time, uh, getting this program to financially pencil out, uh, what we wanted to do today is to, uh, share with you some of our challenges, share with you some of our successes, and then make sure that the Board understands that going into the budget process, we, uh, are continuing to have financial challenges in this program, and we want you to be aware of that, uh, we'll go into more details, uh, as we go into the, uh, budget process here in the coming months, but we at least wanted to give you a highlight, uh, and update as to what's going on at Fleet, uh, both our accomplishments, uh, which there are many, uh, as well as some of our ongoing challenges, so, uh, without being said, I'd like to ask, uh, Gary to jump in, uh, as you know, Gary, uh, Stockhoff, our Public Works Director oversees the fleet program, and then Keith Nicholson has direct responsibility, uh, for the program as our fleet manager, so, you'll be hearing from both of them today, uh, Teresa in the background is operating slideshow, uh, for us, so Teresa, thanks for helping out there as well, okay, Gary, go right ahead.
Okay, yes, uh, Commissioners, good morning, uh, welcome, Commissioner Weiss, we're glad to have you here and start the new year off, um, I hope that I can get through, uh, the information here and, and keep you on schedule and ahead of schedule, so, uh, Teresa, if you'll get the first slide, thank you very much for being, uh, our man of light today, um, but just to kind of give a background on where we've been, which will help kind of set the context for our challenges and where we've come, uh, but, you know, we, we got here just for the reasons, some of the reasons listed here on this slide, um, as over time, uh, we found the priority was given to external accounts, uh, not internal accounts, there was inconsistent maintenance and repair of, of county assets, which, um, you'll see kind of led to our, our, our fleet aging, and sometimes not so gracefully, uh, the replacement money that was set aside, it was not really done on a consistent basis, and it was sometimes used to help offset the actual operations, so, i- if there was X number of dollars in the replacement fund, uh, maybe that vehicle didn't get purchased that year because it was needed to help, uh, cover some of the operations, uh, not all departments were contributing to the fleet, um, there was really no clear model understanding of how the rates were developed, uh, and it was not a fully burdened model either, which you'll see later as what we've developed, starting in two thousand eighteen-ish, um, the labor rate was kind of based on doing a little quick inventory of the local, uh, shops and such, and then trying to come up with an average that probably was average or maybe a little bit below, um, and then we had inconsistent billable hours in there too, which again, I think has now been addressed with, uh, the new faster system, which we'll talk about a little bit later, but, uh, and this is about four years ago, right about just when Keith got here, and, and Joe as well, that the model that we thought we had in place, uh, for Fleet clearly wasn't a sustainable model to keep things going, so, recognizing all that, then we jump into, Teresa, you'll switch to the next slide, um, we jump into the challenges that we found ourselves, uh, trying to address, um, one was just what was the prior cost, or the, the model that we used or, or lack thereof, uh, we found that we were not competitive, uh, for our, our techs, and we were having a hard time, especially, um, probably late eighteen, early nineteen, uh, right after I got here, uh, we couldn't find anybody, and it, it was, we were on the struggle bus trying to keep up with stuff, and then, of course, we had a lot of retirements that happened in there as well, uh, I talked earlier about our fleet and managing one that was old and worn out, and equipment that, you know, hadn't been replaced, sometimes we actually bought used equipment that was already, you know, having some challenges, and then just kept working it and trying to keep it running, um, as I mentioned before, we did not have a consistent multi-year replacement fund program identified, we also, you know, had to develop schedules and policy for maintenance of the, the vehicles, um, then we start factoring in, we had PERS and health insurance and all those costs that go into our, our, you know, covering our costs, bills were going up, uh, we also found that because of sometimes the budget challenges, you know, if you go back to oh eight, oh nine, and ten, and, and the, the big meltdown there, that we weren't able to set aside funding consistently for training, and, and that kind of stuff, and then, of course, last year, COVID, as, and I hate to say, is, is just the, the common theme for twenty twenty, and, and it, it, again, pretty bad, which, as we go to the next slide, Teresa, and Commissioner, I guess, if you've got a question here, just kind, you know, I'll try to watch, I'm having, my picture's a little bit smaller, but if you've got a question as we go on, please just ask it, um, I'm kind of the pretty face here today, the technical person will be Keith, and he will be able to give you, you know, get into the weeds on some of these, these, uh, items about the programs and such, but, as we started this back in two thousand, as Keith started this back in two thousand eighteen, it was really, the first step was coming up with a, a model, a, a fully loaded, fully burdened, uh, rate model that we could then use to properly assess costs to all the various vendors, clients, internal, external, you know, the whole thing, and, and capture all those other costs that we have, Keith had experience, uh, from a previous employer with a model from the American Public Works Association, uh, he and Jen Ambio went about developing that, uh, and was, we were, again, working for that, with the idea being that that model was used to create the, the hourly rate, the labor rate, starting within July one of two thousand nineteen, and that we would begin the new program, the new rate-based model in two thousand nineteen, and again, because of things that I just mentioned, especially with COVID and, and retaining employees, we never really had a chance to even launch that model, because the assumptions we made were kind of already out the window, as we got into this, and talking to Joe, and Mary, and Keith, and, and some others, uh, it became apparent that we were going to find ourselves and have found ourselves, uh, uh, below the water surface level, and so, we needed to find out, was the APWA model really good, was it effective, was it the right model, and so, uh, last summer, we retained Mercury Associates, they're a company that goes in and looks at rate models and fleet operations and, uh, on a, you know, national basis, and they did, uh... And they did a test on our APWA model and found that it was actually a good model, that the assumptions made and the way we were going about it was starting our boat moving in the right direction. And subsequently to that, we have actually taken and adopted Mercury's model because we found that it is easier to update. So every year, I don't want Keith to say that, but every year the idea is to update that to make sure that the rate that we're charging is appropriate. Does it need to go up? Does it need to go down? So as we go through that process and all those, you know, zillions of numbers that go into that, the Mercury model is actually easier to do. So that's one thing we'll be asking today is confirm that you're okay with us moving forward with using the Mercury model. In the fall of 2019, got my year straight here, yes. The board helped us tremendously. Again, we thank you for that by supporting increasing salaries for our technicians. That made the world of difference for us. Not only were we able to retain employees because, again, when prior to that, we were losing them to an outside competitor because a lot of it was paid. We were able to retain our existing ones, but then last December, a year ago in 2019, we actually hired three new technicians, mechanics. Wonderful. We had great options and that was because of the salary and the benefits and the working conditions. So that was a huge win for us and again, it was part of the puzzle of getting us back onto the right side of the water. Then the other part of that is, as part of that, a fully funded and dedicated replacement fund was established. And talk a little bit more about that in a slide that has balances coming up. Huge. It makes it predictable for us to be able to start replacing our fleet on a industry standard timeframe so that we don't sit here and find ourselves with vehicles that are 15, 20 or more years old. As a side note, we've been able to in roads because of a separate funding source through the state replace or start to replace some equipment that was well past its useful life and starting to cost us a lot of money just to keep going. Last week, we actually ordered our new road grader. And the older one was 20-plus years old. We've already sold it to somebody else. I'm not sure what they're going to use it for, but, you know, we're starting to make a difference in getting our old equipment replaced. We've also changed the emphasis, the next bullet, that we are not really looking to buy used equipment anymore. We, you know, it just doesn't pencil out. Now, not to say that if something come along and it was low hours or low miles or whatever that we wouldn't consider because we would, but it's got to be a pretty special case that we just don't want to inherit somebody else's problem and take them on ourselves. In September of 19, Keith was able to launch the new faster system, which is the one that they use to monitor hours and work orders and it just, it captures just a plethora of information. And that's one, if you have questions on that, I would defer to Keith at later point. But it also gives an interface for the customers to look at and they kind of see what's going on a little bit. Brought us into the new century. Again, took some time to get it rolling. We launched it right about just before COVID hit. But the good news is, is that we are now a year into that and it's seemingly the technicians are getting used to that. A silver lining of COVID with the funds that we had, we've actually, because of how the technicians log in the information, they had one computer. We have now, to keep social distancing and workspaces, even though they're in a big shop, we were able to purchase iPads for every one of them and they have it right there at their workstation. So again, we're making great progress to getting, you know, us going in the right direction. And we have consistently been able to budget for tools and equipment, especially with the emphasis on safety and efficiency. And we, in fact, I just approved an order here for some safety equipment about a month ago. So we've made great strides in trying to come up and take care of those items. So any questions so far, Commissioners? Okay, Teresa, click on. So here's the one you probably are most interested in. And again, questions on this, this information was provided by Mary. 514 is our internal, our internal customers. That's Fund 514. At the bottom, you see Fund 520, that's our outside customers. So you can see internally, we started with a balance, we've eaten into it. But we still have, we still have a positive balance. On the 520 at the bottom, clearly we started with nothing there and you can see that is the biggest deficit that we have right now. I think a thing that we're trying to do here, transparency-wise, is we're trying to make sure that we're separating out external, internal so that we can compare. And I think as we go forward, obviously, we will continue to evaluate whether it makes sense to do external or not. And or how do we go about it to make sure that it's not that breaking even, which is, I think, when I get to the final one, that'll be something I'll chat just briefly about. The one I want to point out is here that I think a huge success of, to me, indicates that we're with the models that we're looking at and the process that we're going through is that we are making progress. And that is the Fund 514 New Replacement Fund and the Old Replacement Fund. And if you'll notice, especially on the New Replacement Fund, the balance of a little over a million dollars, 18 months ago, that was, that wasn't there. Now, again, a silver lining with COVID is that the use of our county fleet has gone way, way down. So we've been able to keep the miles off of vehicles and let that fund build up. But that fund has been able to build up because of the new model and setting aside monies based on the kind of vehicle it is and the life of that vehicle. We start having that so that when it comes up and help has a car that it's time to replace, they actually have a fund that's already been set up to replace that vehicle and we don't have to go on a budget-by-budget cycle for it. And then the Old Replacement Fund, which was something that had already been in place, it was about $500,000, a little bit more when we started the biennium in July of 2019. And you'll see again that it, we've used it a little bit, but not a lot. So I think that is still the good news, that we're trending in the right direction. But that bottom number, as we go through the next six months and as we get closer to the new biennium, you know, talking to Joe and Mary and Keith and everybody, is that we will continue to monitor that to see how it's going and what we might have to do when we get ready for the new biennium to start. Joe?
Gary, I just wanted to interject real quickly. Two items, Commissioners. I think it's really important to recognize the internal fleet services versus the external fleet services. This is really, I think, the first time that we into how each one of those separate businesses, if you will, are doing. We've had them lumped together. And so we've gotten to a lot of work, especially since we have the new faster system to help us keep track now based on the internal services we're offering to departments versus the services that we're offering to other agencies throughout the region. So these numbers are really important for us not only to understand, but for us to continue to track. In addition, I do want to acknowledge that we have lost the City of Albany's Fire Department and it's probably been a year or 18 months. We lost that business to a private company that came in and did some aggressive marketing with some of our customers in the region. The City of Albany did decide to migrate to that other private provider and that has had a, what I would call a significant impact on our revenues in this particular case. So Gary identified what some of our overhead expenses were on an earlier slide. But what we haven't shared with you is, you know, part of our challenge is on the revenue side of the equation. And in that case, we've lost some business. However, Keith has been very engaged with trying to bring in additional business, as I think you'll see here towards the end of the presentation. So I just wanted to add those two items for your information.
I have just a quick follow-up question about the numbers. In terms of Fund 514, the Internal Fleet Services, if I look at that number for the current balance as of November, $288,129, that's, and where we began the biennium, that looks like a pretty standard burn rate, correct? I'm assuming that that fund primarily captures the, just the costs of running the shop and all of the salaries, et cetera.
I'll take a stab. I think, Commissioner, if we're able to have our revenues meet our expenditures, that fund balance should stay about the same from year to year to year. We've had to burn into it because as Joe said, our revenues haven't been as we expected, especially we had several months in the fall of 2019 where we were without at least two of our mechanics or three for health reasons or retirements or whatever. So I think that that burn rate is probably more indicative of us not being able to raise revenues during that period as much as we had expected.
But that's, I'm a little confused because my understanding was that the Internal Fleet Services were not based, are they based on the same revenue model? I guess that should be my question. And are we charging our departments those same rates that we are charging for external fleet services?
I think Keith can answer that.
So, yes, we've got, the majority of the county fleets are on a rate model, so they pay a set amount every month. And it's based on actuals that we've experienced in prior years. We do have some of the county, of the, what we call time and material model, so that's kind of a more similar model to what we have on the external departments. Part of the challenge that we've had in setting up the initial rate model to the WA system was that in order to set the rate model and be as transparent as possible, we have to do a look back. So you look back at the prior two years with this model of how much time and energy this department spent. That was during a time where we weren't spending a lot of energy on the county fleet and we were focusing our attention more on the external. So over the last couple of years, we have spent a significant amount more money on the county fleet, road departments, several other departments that have needed a lot of maintenance to get their equipment up to standards. So that's definitely eaten into that. And that, obviously, then if we go into the next biennium, if we look at the rates for that model, we look back to the time we're in now and those will be used to set models for the following.
Okay, so basically what I hear you saying is that the internal rate model was set using historical data, which did not reflect the practices that we want to use moving forward. Is that fair? Okay. Thanks. Thank you. I understand that better now.
Okay, Teresa, why don't we go to the next slide? So real quick, Commissioners, we've talked about the hourly rate and how we go about. So annually, as you'll see, it's about time to do that again. Keith will go out and he will kind of take stock of all the local vendors that we use. And again, these are large, small, you know, dealers. And so what you'll see at the bottom here is this was done a year ago and the rate, the average rate a year ago was $127.31 an hour. Our current rate that we set in place starting last summer is $121 an hour. So, and I would guess, again with inflation, that that rate, 127, will go up, let's just say 3%, which puts it into the 131 range, starting for, I'll say calendar year 2021. And on the next slide, Teresa, you will go there. You'll see that we've got a, we're working through as part of the budget to set our rates that would kick in on July 1 of 2021. And the rate that I want you to look at is there, the top one in the green column, which is 125.17. I think this is based on what Mercury did and we're confirming all that now. But that's probably about what our rate will be starting with July of this year. It'll be about 125 bucks an hour. So if, you know, doing all the extrapolation and interpretation and all that, we'll probably be around $125 an hour and the average for the outside will probably be around 131 an hour. So we are still very, very competitive and not out of line with our local vendors. So that's kind of, but we're still refining the numbers, still working through the model to determine what those are. If we stay on this slide, there's certain factors that are up and down the line there. Parts markup, sublet markup. Again, we may not be able to buy tires. We don't do tires. And so when we take it down to our local tire vendor, I won't even use their name, and have tires replaced, we do that as a service for our clients. And obviously, our time for billing and stuff is still, you know, worth something. So that's that markup or the sublet cost. It's not a huge amount of money, but again, we're looking at capturing all the costs to make sure that we're not subsidizing anything. And that's the beauty of this new rate model, is that it does capture the fully burdened rate that we need to charge to cover everything. The only other item on here I would probably point your attention to is the very bottom line. And that is Keith does a lot of work for other agencies to help them acquire equipment. I think he just is getting ready to put in an order for a new paramedic unit for Corvallis or two. So he will work on getting it specced, getting it all ready to bid and actually, in the past, we've actually paid for that equipment for them and then they pay us back. But prior to this, there was kind of a flat rate, whether it was a $12 car or $12 part or, you know, an $80,000 unit. That is now kind of been parceled out to where if it's an easy sedan or pickup, Keith will charge the $4.95 and if it's a little bit more, it'll be closer to that. I think it's $9.95. But we do that for a lot of folks and I think that's why, just a little sidestep here, we have brought on some new clients, especially the smaller rural fire districts and have helped them and been able to work with them. We are also, we retained the City of Corvallis Fire, which was a good one, and they are getting ready to renew their contract with us. We've also retained Lebanon Fire and actually will work on bringing in Lebanon PD as well on their own separate contract. So a lot of streamlining has been done and I think we're still, like the previous slide shows, very competitive with being able to take care of the needs. And I think some of these, it's the responsive nature. You know, for instance, Corvallis, it's very handy to be able to bring their equipment out to Avery and it saves a lot of time and money in transporting them here and there. So, and it's that local flavor, I think, that is important, that we all kind of strive to continue on with. Teresa, if you'll go to the next slide because I think we're getting close to our time limit here. So here's the next steps and I'm going to kind of, I don't want to rush through these, but I want to be respectful of your time. So again, we would ask for your support to continue on with the Mercury model as we try to make sure that what we're doing is transparent. And that's a huge thing, to make sure that we understand internal versus external costs. Which goes into the next one, continue to implement the plan. I will use the example of the replacement fund that in just 18 months, we now have a pretty healthy replacement fund and are continuing to build on that. I think that's indicative of how we're going to work the entire model. Here's this one and it's been simmering out there for a little bit and again, COVID kind of put it on the back burner, but there is some discussion, again, as we talk about about regional efficiency to bring others into the, the model, city, whatever, or other cities. But one that we've had actually discussions with is O S U and their fleet services and, and they have some desires, I think, to do something else on the site where their fleet is. And does it make sense for us to maybe combine efforts and, and look at doing that, which again would be a more efficient model? And at the end of the day, it does benefit all the taxpayers that are paying into, you know, our, our various fleet programs. We hope that in the next month or two that we'll be able to kind of renew those discussions, once the vaccine comes out and people kind of start settling in into whatever the previous normal routine was. The other two items at the end are items that were recommended by Mercury and that is that we need to adopt Fleet Policy Procedure Manual, which I will, we're working with Keith. He's got a model or an example already in place and we'll just have to work through our internal controls to get that done, but the goal is to have that done by July of this summer. And then one of the big ticket items is to have a, a service level agreement with every customer, which kind of guarantees rates, guarantees this is what we'll do, this is what they'll do. Mercury recommended that we have that, that's a pretty industry standard item. We would, the, the date's out there almost two years because of the fact that we have eighty plus customers and we would need time to get those all done. We would start with our bigger customers and then kind of work our way down the line. As a new customer comes on, though, we would try to have that in place at the time. So right now, our guinea pig is Corvallis Schools and we've sent that to them and they're looking at that now and trying to get it kind of standardized so that we can get them under a service level agreement. And again, just continue on and as we go through the next few months, we will continue to monitor the budget, kind of have an idea and see as we get closer to the end of this fiscal year, this biennium, what the options are to go forward and how we expect to go forward. But again, we, we believe that we're on the right track and, and want to confirm that we're, we're going to keep moving ahead. So with that, I will be quiet and entertain questions or comments or?
Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, Gary, I've, I've been following the discussion with O S U and I know they've had, which we have to review this situation and I really like the idea of increasing our scale. I, I remember a little over a year ago, maybe it was a year and a half, and losing employees and kind of getting down to bare bones as far as technicians that can do the job. And I think if we up our scale a little bit, then one or two people maybe won't have as big an impact on, on our operation. And I guess my other comment is I really appreciate turning our fleet services into more of a, a business and identifying costs and making sure they're connected with the, with the service. But I guess I was a little disappointed you mean my nineteen fifty four cap is slightly out of date, is that what you're saying?
No, it's a collector item, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I.
Joe?
Thank you. I did want to also touch on the discussions with O S U. Interestingly enough, O S U was using the same consultant that we use, which is Mercury. And O S U had engaged Mercury even before we had, unbeknownst to one another, that we were each working with that group to help us take a look at our respective fleets. What O S U has done is they've taken kind of a top to bottom evaluation of their entire fleet program. What we did with Mercury is we just came in and asked them to come in and take a look at our rate model and make recommendations or suggestions. But as part of that connection between the consultant, that's really how we engage conversations with O S U. And I, I will tell you that Keith and Gary and I are both on the same page about really trying to advance more of this regionalization concept. I think you can tell by the numbers that have been shared that Benton County is certainly carrying all of the overhead for the operations. And each one of our respective local jurisdictions, whether or not it be the colleges or the municipalities and/or adjacent counties, all of us have this fleet expense. And I really do think that there is a better way to do it in the future than how we're doing it today. I think Keith and Gary have done an outstanding job of beginning to get clarity, beginning to operate our fleet program in a really professional way. And, but we're still on the same page of seeking out other models and/or alternatives that should be explored. And so I just share that with you Commissioners because we will begin active discussions again with O S U once they're ready. They asked us to kind of take a timeout and wait until they were able to work through some of the challenges. But as Gary mentioned, we do plan to get back to that conversation and it will not only be a conversation with O S U, but other local jurisdictions to see if there is a better regional model that might work, where everybody's sharing in the partnership and the overhead of the operations, not just Benton County supporting it to a large degree.
I would like to thank Public Works and Fleet. Keith, you've done a fantastic job with your team in professionalizing fleet services. It, it, it's been a journey and I think that we're at a very exciting point. And, but it is, as Joe mentioned, an inflection point where we need to determine whether we can sustain the model and particularly the work for all of our external clients. And I am particularly interested in all of those small rural fire districts and some of the other small county of, of fire services that we support because they don't have other options, particularly some of those folks on the coast. So I, I think that we provide a valuable community service, all the more so in this time of increasing wildfire. And I'm very interested in trying to figure out how we can make the model work to the best of our ability to support, to not cut into our own programs by providing this valuable service to others. So thanks. This is fantastic step forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a quick comment on that. So especially discussing the smaller, smaller rural agencies and the like. So, you know, a great shout to the team here and the effort they've done over the last year and a half, especially with some of the new people we've gotten on. We, this year, actually, I guess now, twenty twenty, taking on Amity Fire is now driving down to us, from up on Mendel. Depot Bay Fire is coming over here. Newport Fire is coming over here. And Central Arden Post Fire is in the process of talking with me about wanting to start bringing their equipment over here. But as you say, we've got to make sure that it pencils off both internally and externally. And on the slide, just being right in front of you, that bottom one that talks about the service level agreement, this is something that I've used in the past. And as Gary mentioned, is very much an industry standard for what we do. Part of the challenge that I noticed when I got here is that we have a lot of customers that bring equipment to us, but besides the two, two ones we mentioned like the Lebanon Fire, Corvallis Fire, and then all the ones I've been, everybody else, we're here for them, just like the dealership, should they want to come to us or when they want to come to us. Part of the service level agreement is putting in place is an agreement between both parties so that we can, they, they know what to expect from us when they bring their, but we also know what to expect from them. We know what kind of workload they're going to bring us, how often they're going to bring us workload. So there's that, that tie in agreement back and forth which we've been lacking with a lot of our customers. So I think as we start putting those in place, that will allow us to stabilize and staff accordingly for the work that we know is coming in instead of staffing for what we think might be coming in.
That sounds like a, a very, very helpful piece of information to have. So it's smart. Are there other questions from Commissioner Malone or Commissioner Weiss? Okay. And it was not clear to me whether we wanted a motion that wrapped up these next steps as direction for Public Works. Is that where we want to go?
Commissioner, I would encourage the board to take official action just to support the work that Gary and Keith are doing by formalizing it.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll move to, uh, advise the fleet services to implement this. The next step is there, uh, for this, uh, using.
Pat, can I, can I interrupt for a moment? There are too many microphones on and I'm getting a lot of feedback and we're not able to hear you. Can, thank you.
All right. I, I would instruct fleet services or let fleet services know that the board commissioners approve the use of the Mercury model moving forward and several other steps, including regarding continuing discussions with O S U for turning fleet into, continuing to turn fleet into a regional provider.
Second. Okay, does that effectively capture all that you want captured? Gary and Keith?
Oh.
Okay. All in favor signify with an aye.
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 Chair votes aye. So you have your direction and we are looking forward to next steps and having further discussions in the context of the budget as we prepare for the next biennial budget.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving on to our next item of business, which is item five point four, twenty forty goals and budget. Sean McGuire and Lilia Neville presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy New Year and welcome, Commissioner Weiss. Very nice to see you on screen. So today Sean and I are here to confirm direction that was expressed during the December twenty second board meeting about the Commissioners' overall priorities. We're coming back just to confirm with you before we turn around tomorrow and really start rolling out these concepts to our directors so that they have about five weeks really to find some alignment with the work that they have already planned on doing and their department goals and have that submission for their, their departmental budgets by February eleventh. So Sean, would you like to take it away from there?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Good morning Commissioners and welcome Commissioner Weiss. Yes, exactly as Joe and Lilia had said, we're back here to confirm what we discussed on December twenty second. At that meeting, we shared with you some of the major ongoing initiatives that you reflected on and we discussed. We then walked through each of the focus areas and at the conclusion of that conversation, you identified your, turned out to be top five priorities. It has, and you confirmed that these were the five, but as Lilia said, we needed confirmation today before we move forward started tomorrow. So those five were in your packet, climate crisis, community emergency resiliency, criminal justice, equity, diversity and inclusion, and homelessness and housing security. Those are the five that we asked and we're back here to confirm with you. A couple of comments before we, before we dive into that confirmation. One, you'll see, if you recall, in the logistics of it, I had a spreadsheet and we were kind of bouncing around. We tightened these up and so doing a couple of things. One, we alphabetized these. We, in that conversation on the twenty second, I did not hear or the direction on ranking them, that it was these are the top five. And it's not more importantly criminal justice, which is less important than equity, it was these are the top five. And I did not hear any direction on those, so that's why we alphabetized them to convey to the public, these are the five, and then we're moving forward. The second was we did not put any just titles. We didn't put any verbs in there or anything else we needed to expedite. I think it's been five working days actually since the twenty second. So we feel this is enough direction for Joe to work with directors in the coming weeks to identify departmental goals and activities. I think it's strongly inferred we want to positively affect these and not negatively affect these top five priorities. But in the coming weeks, if we work with directors, we will create a narrative that we'll be working obviously with the Commissioners and directors to make sure everyone's on board. So, and again, to, to, before we go into confirmation and get your thoughts on the twenty second and what is before you, we feel that this is enough for Joe to work with directors and then we'll get into it once confirmed, some of the next steps in January leading up until the budget, some of the budgets review in a regular way. So we're all going to stop there, get feedback and thoughts.
Comments from the Commissioners? Questions?
Sean, I, I think you've captured what we talked about on December twenty second and, and that these, these are our top five goals and I, I, I don't think there was any attempt to say one. One was more important than the other. I can see depending on a specific department or project, the, the order could shift around. So I, I think that alphabetizing is, is as good a way to proceed as, as we, as we could.
That's good to hear, Commissioner.
Yeah, looking at the list, it struck me as, that's what I remembered from the meeting. I looked back at my notes, matched up with my notes. So I appreciate you bringing that forward and the accuracy of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would, I, I agree with my fellow Commissioners and I appreciate having a list of priorities. I'd, I'd like to just say that in terms of moving forward, these are the areas where it would be really nice to have that kind of crosswalk, look at our budget, to be able to look to see what each department is doing to help achieve some of the objectives in these broad bins of priority. And I would ideally love to see us get to the point where we have some smart goals or quantitative targets associated with some of these priorities and can have some type of dashboard as we intend for climate associated with some of these other objectives as well. I recognize that that's a big lift and that this is a long-term process, but for me, I, I would like to say that the, my largest priority would be just to understand from a budgetary standpoint, how different elements of the budget contribute to achieving our objectives in these areas.
May I comment on that, Commissioner?
I will, I cannot more strongly support what you just said. Years ago, before COVID and working with the budget office, you know, your word of crosswalk, in my talk, when I first came on five years ago, talking to staff, we've never really done that on a cross departmental basis. And that really was the catalyst for this whole twenty forty issue. What can we do? How can we prepare ourselves for the future in a, in a purposeful manner? How can we prepare ourselves for the future in a purposeful manner? In the background, we're going to be revising the two indicators that I had mentioned last year. Again, so much of this was gearing up last January and February before COVID hit. But no, just to crosswalk and work with each department and programs and initiatives to see how it all fits together in a focused manner, really revises why we started this whole thing years ago. Thank you for, thank you for your comment.
I guess my comment would be along the same lines, but make sure that all our departments are using these five goals as part of their budget process, that we are serious about this going forward. Obviously takes some time to implement, but that the Commissioners are serious about that these are our goals and do our best to make sure they're reflected in the upcoming budget.
Joe?
Commissioners, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Malone's comment, keeping in mind that it's probably been 14, 15 months ago, the board did provide to the organization 10 focus areas for departments to support. So we've been working over the course of that time with departments to create goals that are in support of those focus areas. So in the absence of these five priorities, that's what we've been doing is working with those departments to ensure that they were supporting the focus areas that were important to the board. Like I said, probably, I don't remember when it was, Sean, 15 months ago, maybe 18. So the reason that I share that is the departments have already updated their goals this fall in relationship to supporting those focus areas. Tomorrow at our leadership team meeting, we will be introducing these five priority areas that the board is discussing right now. So we will be asking departments to go back and look at the goals that they just updated supporting the focus areas and asking them to take a look at these five priority areas to see if their goals are also in support of those or not. And really what we're asking each one of the departments to do is to come forward as part of the budget process, identifying at least three departmental goals that will further either be focus areas or the board's priorities. Both of you, Commissioner Ogeron and Commissioner Malone, have mentioned that this is a journey. So I do want to manage expectations that when we go through this budget process that we're just kicking off, we're making another step. We started with the focus areas, now we're bringing in the priorities. The departments will only have about a month to respond to these five priorities and in terms of developing potential goals that would support one or more of them. But I do want you to be aware that, you know, ideally, we would have had this conversation three or four months ago and unfortunately, we're unable to, to make that happen based on our COVID and wildfire response. So we're a little bit out of kilter and we're trying to right the ship and align is the word that I like to use, but just managing the board's expectations that things will still not be perfect as we go through this upcoming budget process. But we're getting better lining and we will continue that journey. And I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that the departments were not going to have a significant, significant amount of time to take a look at the priorities and do an exhaustive exercise, if you will, but they will be provided these priorities. The board will hear that tomorrow during our leadership meeting and you'll have the ability to underscore why they're priorities to you. But one step at a time, we're making incremental steps and we're out of kilter a little bit, but we're continuing that alignment and Sean and Lilia have been great about trying to help us maneuver through our COVID days to get this back up to a priority to focus on. So Lilia, Sean, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, if I may, Joe, I just wanted to respond in particular to Commissioner Malone's comments and I think Commissioner Ogeron's as well. As you all know, I was unable to attend the meeting on the 22nd, but I did have an opportunity to debrief extensively with Sean and then as well as with Joe. And so we felt strongly, and especially Sean and I, felt very strongly in reviewing the Commissioners' priorities that our departments are going to be able to either refine goals they currently have to have greater alignment, whether, I'm thinking in particular in the areas of Criminal Justice and Emergency Preparedness. We have a lot of departments that have prioritized those focus areas for their department goals. So for those individuals, you know, it's a bit of refinement and tweaking. If perhaps we have a department that has written goals that don't have pre-existing overlap with focus areas that support your priorities, going back to what I was saying about Sean and I, feel really strongly that your climate crisis priority and your equity diversity and inclusion priority are two priorities that can be hit. I don't want to say easily, but can be hit by each department. If you recall, in November, Sean and Jen and I presented an alternative or a pathway for a goal around climate crisis with regards to fleet utilization. We're working to develop a commute survey to also assist departments with another opportunity to resolve climate crisis, or I'm sorry, work towards advancing our work in the climate crisis arena as well as our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator starts on January 19th. And so I'm more than happy to have conversations with departments about how that role can assist in either fleshing out a goal within the remaining time they have before budgets are due or, you know, providing some technical assistance in the future. So Sean and I are committed to supporting the departments over the next five weeks to ensure that they have the resources that they need to be successful with this task and on time. So fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Sean, that was all that I had. Just want to turn it back to you.
So I just had a couple of, we didn't feel necessary to have like a motion until the official, but we definitely had agreement on the 22nd, but wanted to make sure that the three of you confirmed that these are in fact your five priorities. And Joe laid out our timeline for the next, and Lilia for the next five or six weeks leading up to early February when budgets are due, but just wanted to take a second to officially confirm that these are your priorities. I see head nod. Okay. Thumbs up and that's good enough at this point. That was the, that was the end of our official presentation. I do, and a little surprised with Lilia and Joe here, because of the previous conversation with Keith and Gary regarding the fleet, I just, since it's fresh in your, in your minds, I just want to take one second to say what an amazing tool that Keith has developed now. And I can tell you are meeting with our climate, our climate intern tomorrow, gearing up for our inventory, our emissions inventory for the next year. Keith and fleet has turned something that usually takes weeks into what we hope is be a couple of hours. I think, I just want to convey the importance of these mass leapfrogging and data utilization and technology. This is not, from my perspective, this is not hyperbole and it's, it literally said every single intern, Maura, all the interns who last five years doing this inventory weeks, and now it's going to take a couple, less than a day. So I just wanted to share that since it's fresh in your minds and Gary and Keith just went over that. So sorry to take up more time, but I think that's important to show to the Commissioners and Joe, these major tools have a huge impact on our staff time. So that was it.
I think that that's a theme. The use of data and our data systems in the county have been improving by leaps and bounds. And I think that there's still a lot of room for improvement and of course, we need to make sure that they talk to one another or we have some sort of a data warehouse that can then synthesize from those very issue-specific databases into something more generalizable. But I'm very excited about that and I think that it's going to make our work more effective and more efficient and hopefully help us understand equity issues as well. So I'm happy to see that make a difference already.
Thank you for the opportunity, for that few seconds. So that was the end of, I'm sorry, Commissioner Malone, did you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, Joe mentioned the short timetable and I guess I would add whatever the Commissioners can do to help the process, let us know. I mean, definitely keep us informed, but if you need more support from the Board of Commissioners, don't be shy, Lilia or Sean, to let us know what we can do.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I think we are going to call it a wrap for the work session and take a brief break before we start our regular business meeting. I would propose that we come back as close to 11:00 as we can and resume our meeting. So we're now in. Yes? We will resume our meeting. And the first item of business is the consent calendar, which, um, contains, uh, our meeting scheduled for 2021, designation of official newspaper, and the designation of our, uh, Public Health Authority, um, designating our Public Health Director as the formal Public Health Authority for the county.
I, I would move, uh, to approve the consent calendar, which includes items six point one through six point four.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor signify with an aye.
All in favor.
Aye. Okay, uh, that business done, we'll move on to departmental reports and requests. Item seven point one is in the matter of initiating proceedings to transfer jurisdiction of a segment of South Thirteenth Street to the city of Philomena, and Laurel Byer, fr- from Public Works is here to join us.
Good morning.
Happy to hear you, Laurel.
Thank you. And good morning and welcome, Commissioner Weiss. Um, my name is Laurel Byer, and I'm a county engineer, and I've seen you in other meetings, Commissioner Weiss, but, and for the city, but I'm here today to talk to you about, uh, initiating the proceeding for transferring jurisdiction of South Thirteenth Street to the city of Philomena. Now, the city of Philomena has been working with the Oregon Department of Transportation on a streetscape project for the couplet that goes through the city there, having a beautification project, you know, uh, some landscaping, benches, sidewalks, et cetera. And one of the streets that is proposed to be improved is the segment of Thirteenth Street between Applegate and Main, which currently is still under county jurisdiction. In previous discussions we had with the city manager, it is the county's intent to transfer jurisdiction once the project is complete, but the tricky part about that is since, if there's an agreement, an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT of the state of Oregon, they would require us, the county, to be part of a third-party agreement. And so, rather than complicate issues, Chris Workman contacted the county and said, hey, is it okay, because the city is willing to? Can the county initiate the transfer of the jurisdiction earlier, so that way this intergovernmental agreement is really only between the city of Philomena and the state of Oregon? Which makes total sense to me, because, uh, getting the, the agreement ratified and approved by three different entities is hard enough. So, just to, to limit it to the city of Philomena and the ODOT would be really the ideal way to go. And like I mentioned, the city of Philomena is willing to take over jurisdiction earlier, so if any maintenance issues come up in between the time, uh, their crews would be responsible to do that maintenance. And so, this agenda checklist before you is to set the public hearing, um, in February, on February second, to get the process going. There's a pretty formal process to transfer jurisdiction. So, that's, that's where we're at. On that, are there any questions?
Oh, I, I did, um, it, it sounds very reasonable. A, a lot of times on these transfers, the county has to do, uh, upgrades and before the transfer, uh, i- is this, uh, a, a different kind of animal?
Right, so this is a slightly different kind of animal. So, the county and the city went in and kind of co-sponsored through the Corralis Area Metropolitan Planning Organization through Campbell to get additional funding to improve this section of the road, so it's kind of a match requirement, but it's not coming directly from county road funds, so it's actually coming through the NPO funding segment. Um, so that's kind of our, that's our cash match, as you will, so that way we can improve the road and then transfer jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are you ready for?
Any questions, Commissioner Weiss? Okay. Uh, this seems pretty cut and dry, yes, I'm ready for motion.
Uh, I, I move to approve the order to initiate the proceedings to transfer the jurisdiction of South Thirteenth Street between Main and Applegate, County Road Number twenty-six, twenty-five A, uh, to the city of Philomena, and set the subsequent public hearing for February second, twenty-twenty-one.
Second. Okay, I think there was one digit missing, two-six-two-five-zero-A, but, um, I'm sure that Erica Milo will catch that, um, thank you, and all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, uh, we have green light to move forward, and, um, it sounds like a plan, um, we'll be back for a public hearing on February second.
Yes, we will see you in February. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, with that, we are, um, at the end of our business meeting, unless there's anything under other that, uh, anyone would like to raise. Uh, we do have a series of service district meetings, uh, immediately following this, so we are not done with all of our work quite yet. Okay, with that, uh, we are adjourned for this regular, um, board business meeting.
Eight, eight new meetings to go. Hang with us, Nancy.
Um, what I was saying is, uh, I do not have that in my, uh, packet, is there?
So, Teresa sent an email to you all yester. Let me see what date it is.
It was, mm-hmm. It's also in the calendar?
Yes, it is.
It's a separate, uh, service district packet.
There's one, uh, pad that says CSD agendas, that should suffice, unless you want to go through and look at every one of the packets?
Well, I have not been able to open it. I'll see if, uh, I can get to it from the calendar.
If not, I can send it again, Commissioner Malone.
The calendar is not working either. So, I'm not quite, uh, yeah, send it again to Teresa, that might be the, uh, most efficient way to proceed.
Vance, I have a question for you. Is it required that Commissioner Malone, uh, uh, open up each one of those meetings, or can Commissioner Ojero go ahead and do that?
Uh, the vice chair may in fact open up the meetings, however, our chair is present, so I think more appropriate that the chair open up the meetings because the chair is present.
Acknowledged.
And, and yes, I do, I do wish I had a different answer for you, Joe.
It will be coming your way here in just a moment.
Technology needs a break.
You're gonna handle these, Ann?
Uh, no, you need to open the meetings since you're present, um, according to Vance.
Trying to do a download, so it's taking a few minutes, sorry.
You're gonna handle these, Ann?
Uh, no, you need to open the meetings since you're present, um, according to Vance. Trying to do a download, so it's taking a few minutes, sorry.
Hey, Commissioner Malone, it should be, uh, sent as an email to you?
Hmm? Yep. Okay. We have liftoff here. Uh, thank you, Teresa. So, I would like to, uh, open the meeting for the Bend County nine-one-one Emergency Communication Services County Service District Governing Board. Uh, are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, new business, selection of chair and vice chair.
I would like to appoint Van Ojero as chair.
All right, then, uh, I will, um, move to appoint Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
Well, well, I, I think we, we need a second to the first motion, uh, and then vote on that. Unfortunately, this is the, just the setup of the three of you, we, we can't do both at this, in one motion, like, once in a while we've done in the past. Sorry, Pat. We just, we just keep trying to make this more difficult for you, don't we?
I will, um, second, uh, Commissioner Ojero as chair.
All in favor signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now we'll entertain a vo- uh, motion regarding vice chair.
Uh, I move to, uh, what, uh, Nancy Weiss's, uh, with Weiss chair.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, the next item of business is the consent calendar, um, designating an official newspaper, um, and, uh, setting the meeting schedule for the nine-one-one Emergency Communication Service District Governing Body, and the approval of meeting minutes from October sixth during your motion. Move you up, move you up for the consent calendar?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we have concluded our business for the nine-one-one service district, and the meeting is now, uh, adjourned.
All right. Um, next up, uh, I'd like to open the Alpine County Service District, uh, Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, item number two is new business, election of, uh, chair.
I would like to appoint Van Ojero as chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, the next item of business is now the consent calendar, um, designating an official newspaper, um, and, uh, setting the meeting schedule for the nine-one-one Emergency Communication Service District Governing Body, and the approval of meeting minutes from October sixth during your motion. Move you up, move you up for the consent calendar?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we have concluded our business for the nine-one-one service district, and the meeting is now, uh, adjourned.
All right. All right. Next up, uh, I'd like to open the Alpine County Service District, uh, Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, item number two is new business, election of, uh, chair.
I would like to nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, the next item of business is the consent calendar, um, designating an official newspaper, um, and, uh, setting the meeting schedule for the nine-one-one Emergency Communication Service District Governing Body, and the approval of meeting minutes from October sixth during your motion. Move you up, move you up for the consent calendar?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we have concluded our business for the nine-one-one service district, and the meeting is now, uh, adjourned.
All right. All right. Um, next up, uh, I'd like to open the Alpine County Service District, uh, Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, item number two is new business, election of, uh, chair.
I would nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we will entertain a vo- uh, motion regarding vice chair.
Uh, I move to, uh, what, uh, Nancy Weiss's, uh, with Weiss chair.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, the next item of business is the consent calendar, um, designating an official newspaper, um, and, uh, setting the meeting schedule for the nine-one-one Emergency Communication Service District Governing Body, and the approval of meeting minutes from October sixth during your motion. Move you up, move you up for the consent calendar?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, we have concluded our business for the nine-one-one service district, and the meeting is now, uh, adjourned.
All right. Um, next up, uh, I'd like to open the Alpine County Service District, uh, Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, item number two is new business, election of, uh, chair.
I would like to appoint Van Ojero as chair.
I will second that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Um, I would chair, uh, uh, nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item of business is the approval of the consent calendar, designating the official newspaper, setting the, um, governing body meeting schedule, and approving the July seventh, twenty-twenty meeting minutes from the Alsey County Service District. Move you up for the consent calendar?
I will second that.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes the business of the Alsey County Service District Governing Board. We are now adjourned.
I would like to open the meeting for the Alsey Human Services County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, item number two, new business, election of chair.
I would like to appoint Van Ojero as chair.
Oh, move, move to appoint.
Wait, thank you.
I will second that, all, all in favor of, of, of Van Ojero as chair, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, now we'll move to, um, vice chair, um, nominations?
I'll nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item of business is the consent calendar, uh, designating the official newspaper and, uh, designating the governing body meeting schedule for 2021, and approving October sixth, twenty-twenty meeting minutes.
I will, uh, move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and that concludes the business of the Alsey Human Services County Service District, uh, Governing Board. I have a quick question for Erica, are we going too fast?
Uh, no, everything's fine, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I will, uh, open the meeting for the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item two, new business, election of chair, um, nomination?
I would nominate Van Ojero as chair.
I will second that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Move on to, um, vice chair, uh, nominations?
I will nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, um, designating the official newspaper for the Cascade View County Service District, uh, and setting the, uh, governing body meeting schedule for the district, and approving June sixteenth, twenty-twenty meeting minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Business for the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board is concluded, we are adjourned.
I will open the meeting for the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public?
Uh, uh, did we go past the Bend County Agricultural Services District?
Yeah, we skipped extension.
Yep. What, what, what should I do, Vance?
Uh, we just, uh, we just ignored what you said. It was a misspeak, so I think, uh, hopefully your, your plan opened the Bend County Agricultural Services, Extension Services County Service District Governing Board meeting.
That, that's what I said, man.
That's, I, I'm sorry, I misheard.
Um, are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, we'll, uh, go on to new business, selection of chair, uh, nomination?
I would like to nominate Van Ojero as chair.
I will second that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, now I will entertain nomination for a vice chair.
I nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item of business is the consent calendar, uh, designating the official newspaper and, uh, designating the governing body meeting schedule for 2021, and approving October sixth, twenty-twenty meeting minutes.
I will, uh, move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Uh, and that concludes the business of the Alsey Human Services County Service District, uh, Governing Board. I have a quick question for Erica, are we going too fast?
Uh, no, everything's fine, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I will, uh, open the meeting for the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item two, new business, election of chair, um, nomination?
I would nominate Van Ojero as chair.
I will second that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Move on to, um, vice chair, uh, nominations?
I will nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, um, designating the official newspaper for the Cascade View County Service District, uh, and setting the, uh, governing body meeting schedule for the district, and approving June sixteenth, twenty-twenty meeting minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Business for the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board is concluded, we are adjourned.
I will open the meeting for the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public?
Uh, uh, did we go past the Bend County Agricultural Services District?
Yeah, we skipped extension.
Yep. What, what, what should I do, Vance?
Uh, we just, uh, we just ignored what you said. It was a misspeak, so I think, uh, hopefully your, your plan opened the Bend County Agricultural Services, Extension Services County Service District Governing Board meeting.
That, that's what I said, man.
That's, I, I'm sorry, I misheard.
Um, are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, uh, we'll, uh, go on to new business, selection of chair, uh, nomination?
I would like to nominate Van Ojero as chair.
I will second that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, now I will entertain nomination for a vice chair.
I nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next item of business is the consent calendar, uh, setting, uh, the official newspaper for the governing, uh, body, uh, for 2021, uh, setting meeting schedule for the, uh, Extension Service District for 2021, and approving October sixth, 2020, meeting minutes. Move you up for the consent calendar?
I will second that.
All in favor signify with an aye.
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 So, that meeting is closed?
About that, uh, yes, the meeting is adjourned.
Adjourned. I will open the Hidden Valley Domestic Water County Service District Governing Board. Comments from the public? Move on to item number two, election of chair. Nomination?
Move to nominate Dan Ojero as chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nomination for vice chair.
I nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent calendar, to designate official newspaper, meeting schedule, and approve June 16th, 2020, meeting minutes.
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, our business for the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board is concluded, and we are adjourned.
And I will open the meeting for the County Service District for the Library Services Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. Move on to item number two, election of chair. Nominations?
Move to nominate Dan Ojero as chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Open nominations for vice chair.
I move to nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item of business is the consent calendar, approving the official newspaper for the County Service District and setting the governing body meeting schedule for 2021 and approving the October 6th, 2020, meeting minutes.
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, business is concluded for the Library Services Governing Board County Service District, and we are adjourned.
And I will open the meeting for the North Albany County Service District Governing Board. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number two, new business, election of chair. Nomination?
Move to nominate Dan Ojero as chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nominations for vice chair.
I move to nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item of business is the consent calendar, approving the official newspaper, setting the governing body meeting schedule and approving the July 21st, 2020, meeting minutes.
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. That concludes our business for the North Albany County Service District Governing Board, and we are adjourned.
Hearing none, we'll move on to new business, election of chair. Nominations?
Move to nominate Dan Ojero as chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And now we need nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Nancy Weiss as vice chair.
I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Approval of the consent calendar is the next item of business, approving the official newspaper, the County Service District Governing Body meeting schedule, and the July 7th, 2020, meeting minutes. Move to approve consent calendar.
I will second that.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there's no further business of the South Third County Service District, and the meeting is adjourned.
Congratulations, Nancy. You got through the most mundane tasks you'll do.
Anyway, the marathon is done for now until next year. Okay.
I would like the record to note that I got better as the meeting went on.
It's almost a shame we didn't have some more.
No. The problem is you get kind of lulled into a rhythm and fall asleep in the middle. Yeah, okay, thank you all. And we will be together again tomorrow for the county leadership meeting.
Just a comment. This is our first meeting without Commissioner Ojero and want to thank her for her long service to the county and welcome to shiny new Commissioner Nancy Weiss.
I think you meant Commissioner Haramio is missing, but yes, I would heartily concur with that sentiment. And thank you, Nancy, for your first day on the job. New role. Not in your office yet, though, right?
I thought about it, but then I was like, "Of course, I can't skip the Wi-Fi," and, you know. Maybe next time.
Yeah, yeah. Give you a few days to adjust first. Sounds good. Well, thank you all.
This conference is no longer being recorded.